I called order the city of Columbia, a city council meeting of December 6, 2022. And I would like to ask to have Diane give the invocation. And then we're going to ask John Rhodes and Jeremy Sanfree to come forward and lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Lord, we acknowledge your presence and love us tonight. We know you are always with us. So we pray for your guidance during this meeting. You give us the wisdom to work in the best interests of everyone in our community. In your name we pray. Amen.
I would just like to say that, um, before we call the roll, that, I got a good chance to have some time with John and Jeremy. They both volunteered to help out at the joy of Christmas. And it's so great to have the young people active there and get a chance to know who they are and a little bit about them. And so I want to thank you guys for not only coming here, but helping out with that, that program. It's really a lot of help. Thank you very much. Yeah, we call the roll.
Here.
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 Patilio.
Here.
Banner.
Here.
Noel.
Here.
Willard.
Here.
That's.
Here.
Okay, you received in your packet, the November 15th, 2022, minutes of our last meeting. Are there any questions or comments on those minutes? Hearing none, they'll be approved as submitted. A reading of communications. I want to take a minute to read a communication that I received from George Kelly, who's a resident. I think it was a great letter, and I'd just like to share this review. Dear Mayor Noel, last year, December 1, 2021, my wife and I moved to our home here in Columbia. We have enjoyed our new home in the meadows as well as the community. Our neighbors have been friendly as well as the citizens that we have met. We are very happy to be here. Since we are new to the community, we are still learning the ropes. Most of the dwellings in the meadows are condominiums, but ours is not. We decided to maintain our own property rather than use lawn service. As a result, when fall came and the leaves fell, we had to dispose of our leaves. We are thankful that the city not only has a program for leaf removal, but provides biodegradable bags. We looked at the city schedule and dates for leaf removal by the city. On November 14th, the city was supposed to pick up the leaves, but they did not. I called the city office on Tuesday to report that our leaves were not picked up. The woman who answered the phone was very pleasant, and she, she would pass along my message. Today, Thursday, November 17th, our leaves were picked up. I want to thank you and all the employees involved for a quick response. Please pass along our thanks to all of them. They deserve it. I was an employee of the city of Lynchburg, Virginia, and retired after 13 years on July of 2010. As a former public servant, I'm quite aware of the most, that most of the time when city employees hear from citizens, it's usually in the form of a complaint rather than the thanks. So I want to take this opportunity to thank you and the city employees for make this citizen happy. Our friends and family who have visited, visited us have been very complimentary of our town. Our grandchildren visited us this summer, enjoyed the park and the swimming pool. We have enjoyed the shops, restaurants, walking trails, and Firestone Park. The library has wonderful programs for the public, which we have enjoyed. I am a golfer and have enjoyed playing the very challenging course, the lengths of Firestone Farms. Thank you, Mayor, for all, all of you and the city employees do for us. Sincerely, George Kelly. I think it's a tremendous letter, and I even, I, I text him because I didn't necessarily believe it at first when I read it. But I did ask if I could share that letter publicly, and he told me that I could. And he was, and we shared some, some comments about how much he's really appreciates the city of Columbia. And they're really happy to be here. So I thought I'd share that with you. It's always good to get good news. So. I want to thank Mr. Kelly. Uh, we have no reports of boards or commissions, and I have no person desiring to appear tonight. At this time, I'd like to ask for the city manager to give his update report. Lance?
Okay, thanks, sir. We talked about the Christmas movie premiere. Last time we were here, I guess it's trending on Pure Flex, near the top of the, of their subscribers. So that's kind of neat news. Since we've been here last, we had the Christmas parade. It went very well. Thanks to all that it helped. It was very, 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 very cold. Get all the volunteers out there and, and the safety forces. Thank you very much. And Chief, you were out there with us. So it was, it was cold. But we truly appreciate the, the chamber doing that. They provided a breakfast for the, the city workers that morning. So we appreciate that. Since then, the joy Christmas opened. It's doing great. They're still looking for volunteers. So all you have to do is call up the tourism there on North Main and see if you can get signed up. But lots of stuff is going on for Christmas. We've been working on bond council for sewer assessment projects. We've been talking about doing that. Mark and I worked with our bond council. We do have legislation tonight prepared as emergency, and we can get on with that project. We have a pre-construction meeting that will be scheduled here very soon. Mark and I reviewed the status of the short-term rentals. I believe Dan mentioned it a couple of meetings ago. We had brought the proposed legislation back. It was almost a year ago, and we've, we've looked at it and we, we, we followed the, the minutes. And I actually watched that council meeting. We're supposed to send that back to the planning commission. So we're doing that right now. The December planning commission, they're going to discuss short-term rentals. And then they'll throw it back to us, and then hopefully we can get it wrapped up in January. Tim, Tim is actually here. Tim. He and the pork, park board been working on finalizing the pavilion rates for the new Idabel's gathering place. They also are going to start accepting credit cards, parking cemetery office and the pool. We have a legislation on that to do both of those, and the credit card fees will be passed automatically on to the the customer at the time of the transaction. Uh, let's see, Mike's been working on the temporary budget and the end of year things, and he's here tonight. So thanks, Mike, for working on that. We were notified by ODOT that our Phase 2 safety project in the park made it through the first step, the grant selection process. So we're working on that and we'll get that in on time. And we're actually looking for letters of support for that project now. We did attend another art funding meeting at the county, the economic development. And board authority have really been helping out with that, and we've got a December 9 deadline to turn in our application for the, the planning. And we're sure that will go well. Um, we did receive news from the EPA that we did, they accepted our grant for lead service line program. That's, so we're going to be going through neighborhoods, doing pot holding, looking for lead lines, lead, lead service lines, and then replacing those. And we, we were awarded $50,000 to do that. We hope to continue to do that through several rounds. I think we can do it every six months. Uh, let's see, we have, uh, oh, we've been working on it, Lakefront Lift Station project. We've been working with the USDA for funding for that. And we'll probably be here, back here to you about that in probably January. Uh, street department, we clean stormlines and catch basins, picked up leaves. They were a priority, and they pretty much finished up last week. Uh, they're getting ready for snow and ice, and the winter ice, the Columbia corridor. Uh, water department performed 16 locates, which that means that the wastewater department and electric department did too. Um, they are following up on a few EPA correspondences and working with a couple of consultants doing that. And we did receive eight backflow reports recently from businesses. Um, we have our lab certification scheduled out there at the water plant. I think it's in January. We have a company coming in to inspect and clean the tanks. And we hope to get some lime hauled out of our lime lagoons when the, when the weather breaks. Wastewater department did pressure wash the sledge press belt. And they did, actually, it was all hands on deck. We did have a horse main break and a couple of apartments help fix that. And most of the apartments, including the park, water and wastewater helped on the, the leaves for the, for the street department. Park and Cemetery has finished blowing and mulching the leaves from the cemetery, assisted the street department with leaves. And they're preparing right now for weeds across America, and that is on December 17th. It's a pretty impressive event I hear. Uh, winterizing the park facilities, mowers and trimming equipment in that apartment. Electric department, they performed utility locates, tree removal, had a tree removal. Last week, there was a line that was taken down by a tree. Then they got that removed. We had to remove a service for a demolition of a house, and we did an assault temporary service. And attended meetings, continued to attend meetings for commercial projects. And the 1880 barn, all that electrical for, on our side is all complete, so it should be ready soon. And that's, that's everything I had. Mayor, thanks.
Thank you very much, Lance. Any questions for Lance on his report? If none, I would entertain a motion to concert, concur with the city manager and the chief of police to appoint Grace Yarian as an auxiliary police officer to the Columbia Police Authority Auxiliary.
So moved.
Motion second. And a second. A discussion. Diane, you call the roll?
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Listen?
Yes.
Patilio?
Yes.
Banner? Yes.
Very good. Grace, congratulations. And you want to come forward to be sworn in?
Yeah, just come right here. After me, I state your name.
I, Bruce Yarian.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Charter and codified ordinance as a city of Columbia, not Ohio.
And the Charter and ordinance of the city of Columbia, Ohio.
And that I will faithfully discharge my duties.
And I will faithfully discharge my duties.
As an auxiliary officer.
As an auxiliary officer.
To which I've been appointed.
To which I've been appointed.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Grace. You didn't know you had to go through all of that, huh?
It's all downhill from here.
Yeah, it's all downhill. That's the hardest thing you have to do. That's not true, Chief. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Thank you for coming. Uh, you've received in your packet, the November 22 EMS department report as well as the November 22 Building and Zoning Department report. Are there any questions or comments on those reports? Hearing none, they'll be accepted as submitted. And you've also received a copy of the 12622 bill list. Any questions on that? Okay. Now, before I begin, I'm not real pleased when Mike comes to the meeting. Because he puts me through my paces, reading these ordinances. And I don't know, I think he puts a lot of numbers in here just to entertain. Oh, yeah, sure. Sure. That's what they all say. Okay, they, that's what they all say. Okay, first of all, I entertain a motion to read the following ordinances and resolutions by title only.
Second.
Motion second. Diane, you call the roll?
Souter?
Yes.
Listen?
Yes.
Patilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Okay, first I'm going to turn to all business. Uh, we have ordinance number 22 dash O dash 3146. This is a second reading. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Dallas Law, Dawson and Associates Consulting Engineers for the purpose of providing design engineering services for the Columbia Fairfield School Road Lisbon Street roadway improvement project, PID 114039.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Diane, you call the roll?
Listen?
Yes.
Patilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Yes.
Moved to new business. First, we have a motion to approve the fiscal officer certificate of $650,000 of notes for the Columbia Line, excuse me, County Line Road Sanitary Sewer Extension Project.
So move.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions? Diane?
Patilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Listen?
Yes.
I would like to entertain a motion to read the following motion as an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Uh, Diane?
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Yes.
Listen?
Yes.
Patilio?
Yes.
Ordinance number 22 dash O dash 3148, emergency. An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of not to exceed $650,000 of notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying in anticipation of the levying and collection of special assessments, the property owner's portion and the city's portion of the cost of constructing sanitary stewards together with manholes and service connections thereof, therefore, together with all necessary apparatuses thereto, and by installing and replacing paving as necessary to extend sanitary sewer services along County Line Road between certain termini?
Yes.
And declaring an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second.
Yes, we could just say what he said.
Yeah. Certain termini, is that like where it ends?
Yes.
Okay. Have to reach back to Latin.
It's written by lawyers.
I saw some, there were some words in there. Got attorney written all over. Um, any questions on that motion? Emergency motion. Diane, you call the roll?
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Listen?
Yes.
Patilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Resolution number 22 dash R dash 612, first reading. A resolution ratifying and approving acceptance of credit and debit cards for payment of Firestone Park Pavilion shelters and Idabel Firestone Gathering place, ace rental fees, Hearthstone Pool rental fees, and Columbia Cemetery fees.
So moved.
Second.
What are ace rental fees? I saw it. I think I said.
Yeah.
Okay. Always, everybody tries to trip me up. Just wait, and we're just coming. Okay, is there any questions on the motion?
I did actually have a question in section two, because we spell out the, the fees. Um, and I know that's based on, on what square is charging us. Would we want to, would it make more sense to change that to not say 2.5 or 2.6 to 3.5 or whatever, but to just say we somehow recoup the fees as charged? That way we wouldn't have to change it if the fees go up.
The charges.
Yeah, something like that. Yeah, we can do that for a second reading if that works out.
Well, that's what it, that's what it says earlier, that they, it just says that the fees will be tacked on or whatever.
It's the responsibility of. Just the charge that's put on. No. The applicant will be responsible for any and all findings and charges. Charged. The credit and debit cards.
Yeah, I just, I didn't like that it, it says the city shall seek to recover the financing charges when that's not what's going to happen. I mean, all that's happening is if you're using a card, you pay the fee at that time. So I don't want it to seem like there's any obligation on the city to try to recover any fee because there's not the way I understand it.
Right, yeah. We said something to the effect that the applicant will be responsible for any and all finance charges involved in the use of the credit or debit card for
the transaction.
Each transaction.
We leave it at that.
Well, the manager's report, he spelled that out and very, you know, very explicit. Credit card fees will be automatically charged as a card holder at the time of the transaction period.
Right, but in the ordinance, it says that the city shall seek to recover the financing charges incident to the use. It makes it sound like we have some responsibility, yeah, to take, to get the, the charges, which we just wanted to pass through on the credit card, whoever's using their card to pay for it. So, yeah, that's exactly how it is in there. Yeah, so we just want to, I just want to clarify. And then it takes away the percentages so that it's just that any credit card transaction fee is going to be passed along to the applicant, the customer, whatever we want to say. And it's just, you know, we leave it the percentage up and in case the rates change.
So do we need to move to a bend, or do we just need to?
Do it in the second reading.
Second reading will.
So it will be adjusted from the second reading.
We can change it.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's good, Diane.
I just figured we didn't need any extra work, so.
Uh, is there, Diane, could you call the roll?
Souter?
Yes.
Listen?
Yes.
Patilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Ordinance number 22 dash O dash 3149, first reading. An ordinance establishing dates of regularly scheduled council meetings and meetings of boards and commissions for the calendar year 2023 and directing the publishing and posting of this ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Question, the comments? States look okay, everybody?
Well, that's, that's strictly mayor's court on the fourth. We have to move that, but that's not, that's not in, it's not here. Okay.
Very good. Um, okay, hearing no other comments, Diane? All the roll?
Listen?
Yes.
Patilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Ordinance number 22 dash O dash 3150, first reading. An ordinance amending section 1062.07B1 and B3 of the codified ordinance of Columbia, Ohio regarding rental rates in the recreation park and repealing all other ordinances in conflict herewith.
So moved.
Second.
Diane, you call the roll?
Patilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Listen?
Yes.
Ordinance number 22 dash O dash 3151, first reading. An ordinance amending appropriation ordinance 22 dash O dash 3110 by adding $227,300 in the general fund, $94,000 in the park fund, $10,000 in the cemetery fund, $5,000 in the police pension fund, $260,000 in the water fund, $71,000 in the sewer fund, $380,000 $380,000 in the electric fund, $5,000 in the street fund, $5,000 in the fire fund, $30,000 in the EMS fund, $1,335,750 and 20 cents in the capital improvement fund, $401,000 dollars in the income tax fund and $5,000 in the bond retirement fund, all for the payment of current expenses as they may arise.
So moved.
Second.
You added up the total on that, didn't you?
Wow.
You drink water?
Yeah. Damn, you call the roll?
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Yes.
And your heart beats for us.
Yes.
Tutilio?
Yes.
Ordinance number 22 dash O dash 3152, first reading. An ordinance transferring $400,000 from the income tax fund, $200,000 to the general fund and $200,000 to the capital improvement fund, all for the payment of current expenses as they may arise.
Tomo.
Second.
Motion second, that was easy. Any questions? Damn, you call the roll?
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Listen?
Yes.
Tutilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Ordinance number 22 dash O dash 3153, first reading. An ordinance transferring $25,000 from the general fund, $25,000 to the park fund, all for the payment of current expenses as they may arise.
Tomo, second.
Dan?
Souter?
Yes.
Listen?
Yes.
Tutilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Ordinance number 22 dash O dash 3154, first reading. An ordinance to make temporary appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Columbiana, State of Ohio for the first three months of the year 2023 ending March 31st, 2023.
Tomo.
Second.
Second. Dan?
Listen?
Yes.
Tutilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Yes.
Souter?
Yes. Just think you get to do this all again in two weeks.
I gotta read that whole thing again.
We're going to sell tickets.
Should put it on YouTube. I bet we, I bet we would.
Okay. We have an executive session. But there will be no business after the executive session. So the, for the purpose of the rest of you and your time, we're going to move the public comment section to now. So if anybody out there would like to make any comments? So no comments. Again, I want to thank the young men for participating at the Joy Christmas and also their their other participation. We look forward to having them involved. Any other public comments? Hearing none, are there any council comments? Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, hearing none, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussion of personnel. Section 121.22G1.
Tomo.
Second.
Dan?
Tutilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Listen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I could entertain a motion.
Second.
Three motions.
Did you say and or in?
Damn, you call the roll?
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Listen?
Yes.
Tutilio?
Yes.
Can I hear a motion to adjourn?
Tomo. I'm so used to listening from McBane.